Okay, the board is returning from its working session. Please rise for the pledge to the flag. Okay. The item on our agenda is memorial resolution for Hugh Quathers. I'm going to ask Dr. Hassler to speak about the resolution.
Sure. The memorial resolutions for Hugh Quathers. Hugh retired from the school district in 2015. At the time of his retirement, he was the chief information officer of the school district. However, before that, he had a variety of different roles in the district. He was employed by the district for over forty years. When I saw the date of his hiring, when you read the resolution, it really puts into perspective the amount of time. It talks about the number of lives that he touched while he was here. When you talk about a forty-plus year of career and education, it's just a gigantic number of individuals. Dating all the way back, he was a math teacher in the school district. He was a track coach. He was a soccer coach. He was the M W T A president for, I believe, over ten years. And once again, to say that he had an unbelievable impact on our school district, I think would be an understatement. When you talk about secondary teachers who teach over a hundred kids a year, times that number of years of service, plus coaching, and the various roles that he had, I think it's an understatement to say that it was a lot. He had a gigantic impact on the district. And I think I speak for everybody that our thoughts and prayers go out to the family as they grieve his loss.
Thank you, Dr. Hassler. Is there a motion, please?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Reading of the mission statement. We are committed to academic achievement and success for all students in a safe environment. In partnership with families and our community, our mission is to promote confidence, inspire passion for learning, and to prepare our students to become responsible global citizens. Is there an approval of the revised agenda?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Are there no updates on questions or comments raised from interested citizens? Right, Ms. Clark? Okay. And are there any questions or comments from interested citizens? There is not. And then next is a presentation by Dr. Hassler. And Mrs. Rickley.
Hi.
Dr. Hassler, before you start, we've asked for the presentations to be uploaded in the past so that the community can see them.
Sure.
But I don't see it there. Am I missing it?
I think it's there.
I can make it public.
Oh, there you go.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so thank you to the Board of Education for the opportunity to present. I'm joined tonight by Beth Rickley. She is the Family and Consumer Science Department Chair at the middle school and at the high school. I'm going to share that Jason McGelroy was integral also in the development of this. He's not feeling well and he's not able to be here. But if he were feeling well, he would be seated at the... He was with us for the dry... The run-through yesterday. So he apologizes for not being here. So this presentation, if you go back a year ago this time, is very similar to a presentation that we gave last year about a similar topic. This past year, we submitted an application for two programs to the State Education Department to offer career and technical education programs in our high school. The rationale behind that was built around this that was put out a number of years ago for State Ed regarding students completing the necessary requirements for graduation. The state allowed an opportunity for kids to do what's called the four-plus-one pathway, where basically they take the necessary number of credits. They pass a Regents exam in English, Math, Science, Social Studies, and then they create... They complete a pathway towards graduation as an alternate for an additional assessment. One of the state-approved pathways is to complete a state-approved CTE program. Now, I will tell you, this slide is the same slide that we presented last year this time. However, you may have heard that in November, the Board of Regents is going to be reviewing graduation requirements, and there's a possibility that this opportunity may sunset. However, from what they're sharing with everyone now, that in order to get a diploma in New York State, students will still have to demonstrate proficiency in a variety of ways. One of those ways is going to be to complete a New York State CTE program. So even though the four-plus-one pathway is going to sunset, using CTE as demonstrating proficiency is still going to be permissible under what we anticipate being the new regulations. And once more of that information comes out, I'm sure I'll be back here presenting to the board about that. But based upon the information that they've been releasing related to the graduation requirements, this process is still very much going to be in place for kids. So before we dig deeper into the new programs that we're going to be applying about, Ms. Rickley is going to speak a little bit about an overview of the Family and Consumer Science Department in the middle school and the high school.
Hi, everybody. So this also is pretty much the same slide as last year. We have ten members in the Family and Consumer Science Department. Three are at the middle school. Seven of them are at the high school. We teach these courses, seventh through twelfth grade. They start in seventh grade for two quarters. Eighth grade, they get one quarter. And then all of our courses at the high school are semester-long courses. We did add a new course this year called Child Psychology that will help us in the further part of our presentation. We have three sections of that running next semester, which is fantastic. We did have a very big request on that, which was fantastic. That'll be taught by Corinne LaForge. We have a couple of articulation agreements, some with SUNY Orange and one with SUNY Cobleskill. And we also offer three courses for college credit through SUNY Onyanta. So the kids can take those courses. They don't necessarily have to take it for the college credit. But for a hundred and fifty dollars for three credits, students do sign up to take those courses and get that college credit.
You want to do the extra?
Sure. We also offer three clubs, sorry. We have a sewing club at the middle school. And at the high school, we have a fax club, which is also based on sewing. And then we also have a baking club that we started two years ago.
So last year, when we did this presentation, we were actually joined by Jackie Polkenex, who was the department chair of the Business Department up at the high school. Because last September, we applied for State Ed approval for two programs. The first was Business Administration and Management. That's on the Business Department side. And the other one was Foods and Nutrition, which was on the Family and Consumer Science side. Both of those programs were approved. And once approved, that basically means that we can start enrolling kids in those programs to offer career and technical education credit, similar to the credit that kids receive when they participate in CTE programs at BOSI's. Now, I want to be very clear about this. The intent of creating these programs is not in any way to draw kids away from the experiences that they have as BOSI's, at BOSI's. The intent is to try to expand the numbers of kids that we have able to complete these programs. For example, next month, October ninth, I'm going to be presenting to the board about the BOSI CTE programs and our enrollment in those programs and what our kids are involved in there. We have about a hundred and fifteen students that are currently slated to participate in that program. Right now, we have two students who are currently pursuing Business Administration in our high school and two students who are pursuing the Foods and Nutrition program in the high school, which means that we really actually have a hundred and nineteen students who are working towards getting that CTE credit. The intent is not to keep kids in our high school and limit the number of kids that are going to BOSI's. It's actually intended to increase the number of kids who have the opportunity in order to be able to do that. The benefit of the programs that we're going to be talking about this evening, we are going to submit for State Ed approval for two additional programs to run up at the high school. The first is in early childhood education, and the second is in fashion apparel design. Again, the way that the process works, once we submit the application for approval, the state reviews it. We get approved. The following September is when we have the ability to start enrolling kids within that program to receive that credit.
Can I just add one thing to that?
Sure.
I'm sorry. So in addition to being able to start that program, we can run reports, and I'm working with Dr. Stare right now, to run reports to see what kids have already taken courses that qualify for them to be part of this program. And we seek them out and we discuss with them the program to show them what they can get, so they can get that seal on their diploma when they graduate and what's required to make it to that point. So we do seek out students who qualify for the program because currently, whatever they're taking, if it applies, we can backtrack.
And to your point, when I say that there are two students that are, for example, in the Business Administration program, when I reached out to Jackie Polkenex, she shared to me that the two students that are in the program right now are seniors, and she was able to review their transcript to see that they had the bulk of the credits needed in order to be able to complete it. Now, we have the ability to be able to start advertising so that students who are in freshman and sophomore year can make the decisions on their pathway towards graduation to enter into that program and hopefully capture even more kids to be able to do that. So in general, this next slide is an overview of what the application process looks like.
That's me, okay. So we have been, since we started the Foods and Nutrition one, I've actually been working on all three at once, but wanted to get the first one finished so that way we have a good idea of how to repeat that blueprint to go through the other two. So we started with our self-study committee, which included my department members. It included a couple of administrators. It included our department members from other departments, special education and so forth. And then we filled out the... Or I filled out the application. We create the pathway of the courses that go in there from the department, from other departments. So we've incorporated some business courses in our applications, in our fashion apparel application. We're also including a CAD technology course in there that they can take as an elective. We work through it. We apply... When we do the application, we have to insert all the teacher certifications. And then we go through the exam reviews, where we look at different exam reviews that are offered. So the state has a site, and you can go through what they have. You can review the exams. You can take a look at them. Pick one that goes best with what you're offering the students to take for courses. And then that's the exam that the student will have to sit for and pass as part of their CTE certification that they'll learn at the end. Once we have all of that put together and the application is put together, it goes out to an external committee. They don't have to sit and review it together. So I have for each application, two community-based businesses that are related to the applications. So Bodega Vedetta reviewed our application, and so did the Harriman Clothing Company for the fashion one. And then for the early childhood, we had Little Pals review our application, as well as St. Paul's.
What did you say the first business was? Bodega?
Bodega Vedetta over at the Commons. So I have... We have a student whose mom is the manager there. We went on a field trip there last year with our fashion industry class. And we've just kept in communication. So she was more than happy to go through the application for me. And then Dr. Hassler reviewed the application. Jason McGelroy. And I also had Maggie.
Bural Laporta?
Yes, Bural Laporta. She also reviewed the application. So that's what happens. And now we're here tonight because we're at the final step to get the approval from Dr. Norman and from President Tauber to sign off on that because we can't send in the application without your approval as well.
So as we shared earlier, the two programs that we're seeking approval for are the Early Childhood Program, which includes the Child Psychology course. A number of courses that are within that program, we'll talk a little bit more about the exact courses that are included in each of them, include articulation agreements with SUNY Orange. So in addition to getting the CTE credit, students have the ability in some of the courses to get college credit as well. That's also true on the fashion side. And there's some cross-department relationships there where computer-assisted drawing in the Technology Department is one of the courses that's in that program, as well as a few courses where, again, we have that dual enrollment credit that's offered for students to be able to take. So this is an overview of the actual pathway itself that students would have to complete.
So there are definite requirements for each. And then there are also elective choices to fill up their three-and-a-half credits that they would have to earn throughout their high school career. The requirements up there are independent living, which we call teen living, that... Or they could take money management with career and college planning to meet the career financial management requirement that's required for all CTE programs for students to take. Fashion, obviously, would be the basics, fashion industry, or college fashion studio, and then interior decorating. And the reason why that's "or" is because fashion industry and college fashion studio seem to run every other year. So if we do end up bringing a senior into this program and they've taken one, but the other one is not offered that year, it's okay. However, they are encouraged to take both because, as you can see in the elective choices, they're both listed again. College interior design is also listed. They can do an independent study in fashion. They can do the CAD course, Civil Engineering. So You Want to Be a Millionaire, which is the entrepreneur course that we offer. And they can also do some work-based learning with Chris Conway. So any of those are acceptable. The great thing about these programs is the state lets you put together what would work best for you, and they let you kind of move things around as you need to.
I have a question. The technology course and the business course, are they offered always? It's not driven by the interest from this pathway? They're just there and...
There are already courses that exist.
Yeah, these... Yes, these are courses that are offered independent of this program.
No, I understand that. I'm saying, are they offered every semester at the high school?
Ah, I'm not sure if they're offered every semester. I would have to check.
So it's similar to what you were just saying?
But I do... They're offered every year. I'm not sure that they're offered every single semester. I would have to check on that.
It's just something to make the students aware of.
Yep. And I think that that's one of the reasons why they're built into, on the elective side, and not necessarily the requirement side, where...
Right.
The same is what Beth was talking about related to the fashion industry and fashion. If they alternate years, you can still take both and use one as an elective and one as the required course, but giving kids the flexibility in order to be able to do that.
What's included in the work-based learning?
Yep. You want to talk about that?
Well, Chris Conway is really the one who... That's his...
Who's Chris Conway?
He's... Work-based learning is a program that is in the Business Department. And basically, what it is, is it's just that there's an academic portion where kids have to go through a state-mandated curriculum. Then they get credit for going into a business that has a contract and a relationship with the school district, where Chris Conway, who oversees the work-based learning program, he works with the manager of that. They have to have an articulation agreement with us. He works with the manager of whatever that program might be. And they have an evaluation system that the kids have to partake in. And based upon the number of hours that they work, they actually get high school credit for participating in that program because it meets certain state curriculum. There are a number of businesses that are in the community that we do. But also, for example, the High School Help Desk is another. We have a partnership for the kids who participate in that, where not only do they do a good deed for the school community, but they also get work-based learning credit for that.
Thank you.
Yep.
But Chris is one of our business teachers.
I know who he is. I just want to give some context to everybody that's listening.
I didn't answer that?
You did.
Oh, okay. And then the other pathway is the Early Childhood Education.
So with the Early Childhood Education, again, to meet that career and financial management requirement, they have to take either independent living or the money management with the career and college planning. They have to go and take both early childhood courses that we offer and work in our preschool. Child psychology is now ended in there, and family life is added in there. And then the elective choices here, again, we do have the work-based learning internship, the So You Want to Be a Millionaire course. We have early childhood independent study, and Foods and Human Relations are in there. And again, they can fill up at the top. If they take independent living, and then they also take money management and career and college planning, that can fit in as also elective choices. So there is wiggle room for the course to fit for what they can... What they need, which is fantastic.
And I myself learned something this application process because one of the things, and we were talking about this, was... I think we've talked about one of the courses that we have up at the high school called Explore and Teaching as a Profession. I think some board members have presented there and spoken at the class. And I asked Beth, why was that not included in this? Because it seems like it's a natural fit. And that goes back to the certification piece that Beth was talking about in the beginning, that in order to be able to have your program approved by State Ed, the teachers have to be under the umbrella of CTE, which means that they have to be certified in Family and Consumer Science. They have to be certified in Business. They have to be certified in Technology.
Health Science.
Health Science is another one. Because Ms. Bullock is an English teacher who teaches that class, which is not under the CTE umbrella, that class can't be part of this as one of the three-and-a-half credits. We still have the education major, so that's not going away, where kids can still continue on that pathway, where they do an internship in educational field. Ms. Rickley is part of that. That still exists. This is something that's separate from that.
Although students could do both.
They can do both. And there's a lot of overlap between this program and that program. Any question? All right.
This is me?
Or me. Okay. So obviously, I kind of want to... I want to reiterate that under... There's no intent to try to limit students' access to programs at Orange, Ulster, BOSI's. The benefit of having these programs in the high school is that there may be students who have always wanted to be able to get, you know, CTE credit and complete a CTE program, but didn't have the desire to spend part of their day at BOSI's. And they have the ability to be able to do that here.
Or can't because of other commitments, sports.
Other commitments or whatever, right. And so now they have the ability to be able to have some choices that are within our school system. Kids can still have the ability to continue to pursue their, you know, their interests at BOSI's. If there's something there, obviously, there was always going to be programs that BOSI's offers that I'll be talking more about in October that we're never going to have the ability to be able to offer. You know, things like automotive, welding, heavy equipment, electrical, plumbing. There are many different offerings that BOSI's has that students will still continue to have the ability to be able to do that. So again, the students that we currently have that are going through the programs that we already have the ability to offer are, in addition to all of the seats that we are having our kids go to BOSI's, yeah.
So being in this doesn't preclude a student from being in the BOSI's program?
Well, it... I don't know that they would be able to do both. Because of the numbers of electives that we offer, they would probably need to be in the high school in order to be able to pursue this. But BOSI's also does offer an early childhood program, where students may choose, you know what? I'm going to... I want to do the program at BOSI's rather than doing the one at Monroe Woodbury. But because of other interests and opportunities that may exist with kids staying at the high school, they can do it in the high school and not have to only go to BOSI's as their only option. Again, it's increased CTE opportunities for students. It supports college and career readiness. One of the things that we've already been talking about was ways that we can enhance the programs that we're offering. For example, we offer First Aid and CPR. Is that something that we want to include in the early childhood program? The benefit of all of this, these two things, these four programs that we've talked about over the last two years, we haven't had to add additional classes or staffing because these are all courses that we were already planning to offer within our high school. So it was just organizing the programs that we offer in a more coherent way and applying to State Ed in order to be able to offer these credits, which is fantastic. Finally, we... There are various Perkins Grant opportunities that are out there. Currently, we have a partnership with Orange, Ulster, BOSI's because we send our kids to that program, where our Perkins Grant monies go towards BOSI's. But we may have additional opportunities to be able to provide some funding to some of our CTE programs in the high school. The only way that you can apply for that, those opportunities, though, would be if you have at least three CTE programs. And these two programs would put us now into that category to pursue that. So that's another opportunity that's out there for us.
And that funding is a benefit for the student?
I'm sorry?
That funding would be a benefit, then, for the student?
I think it's more... It's more related to like enhancements. You know, you might be able to qualify for more money to do upgrading in some of the foods, you know, classroom equipment and materials, things that could be passed along directly to the kids. You know, different sewing machine opportunities and things like that. Maybe some technology equipment.
So it's not related to the fee that you discussed in the beginning?
No, it's not related to the fee. Right, right.
It's not to the student. It's... The district is eligible to obtain more money through the Perkins Grant.
Correct.
So Ms. Rickley, you said that you identify... You're working with Dr. Sierra to identify some of the students. How else are you putting this information out to the students? Are you starting in the middle school?
So, right. So we have... Since last year, when we got approved, I personally reached out to students within the building. We figured out how to run a report to see who took the classes... More of the classes that applied to, you know, what we can... I guess the kids that we can fish out and say, hey, are you interested? So that's where we started last year. Going forward this year... And in my video... We make a video every year to give to the students to watch. So it is in the video.
What students? The middle school students?
Both, middle school and high school. I have two different videos. Because when they come in as freshmen, they can't take every course we offer. There's only certain courses that they can take as freshmen because they're like level-one courses. So they... I believe it is in the middle school video as well. It's in the high school video. I have posters that are made and ready to go up. But I didn't want to hang them up because we're not approved by the state yet. So we have all this ready to go. So as soon as you approve, and then the state has to approve, once we have that all in place, then I can go and run those reports. I don't want to be very preemptive on this and jump on it yet. I want to just make sure everything is free and clear.
But when... Eighth grade, when you start to... I think it's in January of your eighth year, you start to talk to the families of the students. This information is shared, then, to say these are some of the pathways that you can take?
It was, last year.
And one of the things... We had talked about the curriculum night that the high school offers. It could be... That could be an eight-hour presentation if we drilled down to every single opportunity that exists. So a lot of times what the department chairs have done, they create individual videos for their department, where if a student knows that that's an area of interest for them, they can hop onto the fax website and access that video to really drill down to what those opportunities...
But Guidance has information on the programs?
Correct. The other layer of this is we also... We've talked about a survey. I've been working with Mr. McGelroy about putting together an interest survey to go out to the students because we're talking about other things that we might be able to build. Talking about a computer science pathway and other things that are out there. But making sure that we're capitalizing on what the student interest is as we design more of these moving forward.
I mean, similar to civic readiness and the biliteracy. Rather than picking out who's on the right track, we could initiate them to...
Hundred percent. Right.
We're doing both.
The seal of biliteracy, rather than saying to kids, you've decided to take a Level Four or a Level Five world language, you can now potentially qualify with the seal of biliteracy, communicating to them in their sophomore year. So that way, they decide, you know what? Maybe I won't drop Spanish at Level Three. I will continue on with Level Four.
Tell it to them in eighth grade. Say, if you stick it out, you will earn a biliteracy.
Yep.
Is there an opportunity for those students that perhaps get denied a vacancy at BOSI's that they would then be eligible to enroll in this program? Or does the overlapping not necessarily allow for that?
No, of course they could. As long as... I mean, again, we... You know, we're going to run those reports and see... I always look at the freshmen, sophomores, and juniors. Obviously, the juniors are going to have to be way more involved and hopefully have taken many courses already to help them through their senior year. And if they do want to go to BOSI's, they wouldn't go until their junior year. With this, it's great because they can actually decide to start freshman year and spread it out throughout their four years, instead of just the junior and senior year that BOSI's offers. So it would depend on what they already have taken. So if they wanted to go to BOSIS for their foods program and they didn't get their seat, they can, we can look at their transcript and see what they've gotten in so far and hopefully help them out, yeah.
I have a quick question on why these two programs were prioritized for this year. So you mentioned that there's kind of an, it's a formalization of some courses that we already offer. Was that the only reason? Or do we have a student interest in these over something like, you mentioned, computer science?
Yes, I, I think that first and foremost, the primary reason was these, all four of these programs are courses that we already offer. So it did not, it's easily woven in to capture additional kids. I think when we start to talk about the computer science piece, we're in the works of talking about what that sequence would be. And that might involve, not to get into a lengthy discussion, but right now, we have computer classes that are offered in the math department, in the science department, in the technology department, in the social studies department. And they would be a little bit more reshaping and tweaking in order to be able to get to a place of offering that. This was very simple for us to be able to get off the ground to be able to offer it. So I think that's number one. And number two is, I think now that we've kind of gotten a handle on this, that student interest survey is gonna be important to us to make sure that we build things based upon whatever the kids are interested in, so.
Any plan, I'm sorry.
We're also learning from this process. The connection with the college, that's another piece that we're developing with the computer science and the high school faculty as well. So that we can be right ready at the time when all the pieces of the puzzle to come together.
I was just gonna say, you know, in past years, you've presented, you know, on, with the PTA on pathways to graduation to the parents. So is there any plan to share this information with parents?
Yep, I already, I'm scheduled for all of you out there. Come to the high school PTA meeting in January. I will be doing that presentation, yes.
This is also in the program of studies. Right now, the Foods and Nutrition approved program is listed in the FACS program of studies.
I just think to give attention to new programs or potential new programs is exciting, you know, for the students, for the parents, you know, everyone has different interests and they're not pushed down a certain path, so, okay.
I just have one comment, and I'm sure it was unintentional. But when you say, "programs we'll never have here," and you start listing some, I just wanna use...
You'll say, "never, we will never have welding." We may have welding one day.
I want to use caution because you say it out loud and the public hears it. Because there are welding, plumbing, there are certain coursework loads at BOSIS that fill up very quickly.
Yeah.
And I think we need to start looking at those trades that we could better support here if that keeps filling up and our students keep getting moved.
Sure.
So I'm not saying...
Never say never.
Never say never.
Got you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No, thank you, Dr. Huster and Ms. Rickley.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item is approval of minutes from September 11th of 2024. Is there a motion?
Motion.
For a second?
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries. Next item is approval of the district-wide school safety team for the 2024-2025 school year.
I have a question.
Please.
There, there's an open item at the bottom that says PTA Representative TBD. So if, and that's fine. But if the district clerk could please record that as a follow-up so we make sure we get the final list when that item is done. And I would suggest if, if the PTA doesn't have anybody who wants to do it, then it should just be put to bed and the list should be finalized with a comment on that. Just so we know we're working with the final. But that was just my only question, comment.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
Motion.
For a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is the approval of the revised Board of Ed meeting calendar. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I'll turn it over to Ms. Hawk for personnel.
Thank you. I'd like to request approval for the items listed under Personnel this evening, 11.1 to 11.16.
Any questions? Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next for business and financial, Mr. Cahill.
Thank you. I respectfully request approval of the business and financial items 12.1 through 12.4.
I have a question.
Any questions?
So my question, and it doesn't have to be answered right now, but it came to me as a parent in regards to the high school extra classroom account balances. So what happens with, and I know that the current report that's listed here for tonight is from July, so, because I guess, what, we go back at least a month prior to them sending it and being updated. So I don't know how current it will look as of today. But what happens with the class monies that are in there? So for instance, the class of 2024 is still currently, as of July, is listing an ending balance of $4,150. So is that monies that then just gets transferred to the next year? And what happened? There was a question that came to me as to a donation that was made. I tried to look in your docs, I can't find it. I don't know what happened, that somebody said that there was a donation that was made to the class. And I don't know if that was to the class of 2025 or if it was in here someplace else, so.
Off the top of my head, I don't know about the donation, Stacy, but we could, we could probably research that. I mean, we've gone back and forth on this. When a, when a class graduates and there's money that's left, how do we handle that? And I, I think at this point, we had collectively agreed that the, the money would be given to the student council, I thought, as sort of a general donation for the good of, of all the students at the high school.
But it's also...
But it wasn't, you're saying, it's still in the...
I don't know, that's my question. Like, my question is, again, as of now, it looks as if there's still a balance. And I realize that that could change based on anything outstanding. But the class of 2024 is no longer. So what happens with, let's just say for argument's sake, the $4,157.7? And then I think the other additional question was in regards to a donation. Off the top of my head, it looks as if perhaps the donation went into the class of 2026 just because of the numbers that they have in their program. And I don't know that to be a fact. It could be that they've been fundraising, I don't know. But I think that was, those were the two...
We can follow up on the, the donation. I don't know off the top of my head.
But the, but the original question is, since that date of the report, has that money been transferred to the student council? That's the question, correct?
It's part of it, absolutely. I didn't know if there, if there's like a delay. Like I said, this report is from July.
There is a delay, right? There's always a delay. There's always a lag on financial reports because we, we can't come up with a report in real time. So typically, even our reports are six weeks, like two months lagging. I can't say for sure, because I'm not sure in real time what that balance is. But again, I could look into that. And the, the protocol has been not to leave money stranded there indefinitely, to disperse it. There's actually another way to do it, like the auditors recommended, or said you could also do this, do it this way. Just proportionally give it to every club that's...
Well, I was just gonna ask you if that was an option. I mean, that sounds like a better option.
Yeah, but...
And the reason I say that is because, and again, I don't know what the intention is when the monies are in student council. But to your point, when you say, oh, the monies that then get into the student council fund for all students to use that, my follow-up question to that would be, how is that monies used? Are you providing a guest speaker that comes in so that every student at the high school is benefiting from it? Because to that point, not every student is in student council. So not every student is going to benefit from that money. Us, the answer is that there is something for the entire school building.
Well, I think the presumption would be that it would be something that would benefit everybody, you know.
The presumption.
Yes, but I can't say for sure, you know.
No, and I, I think that step one is, I don't think that that's rolled over. If that's in July, there still may be outlying expenditures that have to come from that. But, but I think in general, the preface has been that it's gone to student council. And, and is it student council or student government? Because I know that sometimes, you know, they would use it for things like, and I don't know if it's student council or student government, for like homecoming dance or whatever, to bring costs down for...
Well, student council, I think you're right.
Yeah, you know, they might say, we can use that money to go towards the homecoming dance or something like that.
Who decides that? The administration or the club? Does, does now student government as the owner of the funds have to yay or nay expenses?
Yes, yeah, when that money goes...
Do they have a board of students that have to, right?
Student council does.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Of kids that are voted into, yeah, yep.
Right.
Right, correct. I mean, the idea of extra classroom, like the high-level idea of it is that kids, it's more, it's largely about managing money, being part of organizations and committees, understanding governance structures and all those sorts of things.
Absolutely. But, and again, looking at face value from July, student council is sitting with $20,000. So it's not, you know, to the point of saying, okay, if that number is accurate, that it's 4,000, to just say that you're gonna dump it into student council, my question is, for what purpose? Like, what are we using those monies for?
It was a lot of fundraising, you know, in behalf of the community too, to get...
Exactly. And I think that's what I go back to as well. And I, I'm not telling people where to donate their money or how it goes. But I think once it gets to this level, if those monies haven't been spent for that particular class, those monies that were raised for the class of 2024, I'm assuming the expectation was that those monies would be used for the class of 2024. Whatever, they didn't spend it all, that's great. But then what are we doing with those monies?
I'm gonna recommend that we follow the auditor's guidance, if that's what you said, which is equally split it among the clubs.
Well, that was one option. It wasn't an absolute, but...
But I think it's more fair to do that because some clubs don't have a lot of funding.
Right.
And if they're sitting with such a large balance, they're gonna get another four grand into that. There are some clubs that a little bit of money could help. That's just what I, where I said, especially with the auditors.
What if, what if we come back at the next meeting? We'll look into, answer these questions?
It was fine, it wasn't anything for tonight. It was just something that was raised and I just wanted to bring it to the intention because, yeah, when you see that it's in there, it's, you know, what, what are they doing with these monies?
Well, also, I think it raises the question as, you know, is the class planning properly for the money that's incoming and how much they're gonna need? And is there a need to do additional fundraising and looking at the timeline? And there's a whole thing that goes into...
And I think that there were conversations also in the past about trying to find ways to deplete the money down. But then it was kind of like, are you just throwing the money away? Are you throwing the money away just to buy like little odds and ends? Just to use the money up?
We just need a better way of...
Which also makes no sense, right, right.
So, additional conversation will be forthcoming.
We'll report back to the board on this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item is committees, oh, I'm sorry, is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Committees on Special Education and Preschool Special Education, is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And report by our student representative, Ms....
Good evening, everyone. I hope you're all doing well. It's been a wonderful experience getting to know you all over the past two weeks since the last Board of Ed meeting I attended. And it's been wonderful visiting all of the buildings so far, meeting with the principals and discussing my plans for the year. I've already met with Smith, Clove, North Main, and the middle school today. And they were all really wonderful, productive meetings. Tomorrow, I have Central Valley and the high school. And then the following week, Sapphire and Pine Tree sometime. That's a, I gotta follow up with them and set that up. But I wanted to discuss a little bit about what I've been talking to the administrators about and how I'm gonna be going about with my role in, as a student Board of Ed representative. So, so far, I really wanna approach this from a very like analytical standpoint. I wanna be a good figurehead for the students and be someone that they can always look to as a guide and someone to talk to, friendly face. But I also wanna make sure that I'm getting data that's useful for the board. So to do that, I've been going around to the schools, asking about populations, grade breakdowns, and discussing how I'm gonna approach gathering data from the different schools. Obviously, for like the elementary schools, it's gonna be a little different than maybe it will be for the high schools and middle school. But I've been coordinating with all, everyone about that, and it's been going good so far. Also, I wanna just follow up with, the last Board of Ed meeting, there was the discussion about the ELL population. And that really inspired me to take notice of that in my work so far. So I've been specifically asking about the ELL breakdown and potentially asking people from the high school who can speak different languages, because there's only so much I can do as solely English speaker. So getting people from the high school who speak more than one language to come in and assist in collecting information and asking students is really valuable to me and something I hope to set up with the honor societies, the National Honor Society, Spanish Honor Society, other language honor societies, and even for the middle school, the National Junior Honor Society. Getting some of them involved, hopefully helping to collect information and data from students. So for the most part, I'm just going to be continuing getting that information. And then once I have everything set up, I'll be messaging the buildings about tentative dates to come in and workshop with some classrooms, get information directly from them, and continuing on my role to the best of my ability. So that's all I have for today. I'm excited and looking forward to the next couple of weeks. So thank you to everyone who's helped me ease into this role. I really appreciate it. And I'll look forward to seeing you soon. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, next item is reports by committees. Mr. Siriella for audit?
Thank you. We have four audit dates set up. 10/22, 1/14, 3/26, and 6/11. I would like to remind the public that you are allowed and encouraged to come in. I know it's exciting, but you can get to see the work of the audit committee. The October 22nd, we will review the external audit report, which, which then would move forward to BOE acceptance. The January 14th, we're gonna review internal audit report for 2324 and then select a new focus area. And then March 26th, we're gonna review claims auditing and the audit from the NYSED Child Nutrition Unit. And then finally, the last one of the year, school year nine, sorry, June 11th, is review upcoming external audit for financial year ending 2025. That's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Donahue for policy?
Yeah. As I stated at our last meeting, when we met on September 10th, we decided that we will be meeting at 8:30 a.m. on the second Tuesday of every month. So our next meeting will be on October 8th at 8:30 here in this building. And again, the public is welcome to join us. We haven't heard back yet from the state on their, from NICEIT on their input.
They have all of the information they requested from us.
Yes.
They are going to be assigning us a coordinator.
Okay. And I'll let you know where we stand with that, hopefully by our next meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Reynolds for visitation?
We visited Pine Tree this past Monday. And we had a nice walk-through with Dr. Morales and Mr. Martin, where we saw the new seeded grass in the front, which was looking good. Dr. Morales had the front painted to be a little bit more inviting, which I loved the purple, went well with our district. And then we asked for a wish list from her and her team so that we can know where we wanna go to, at least. And the boilers are old still and glad to see that they're on the Capital Project hit list. So that will be helpful for everybody to ensure we have heat. And I think we talked a little bit about upgrades to the playground. Not only for Pine Tree, but some of the other schools as we go through for visitation to make sure our kids are physically active and have the equipment to be a healthy, not only child, but grow into a healthy adult. So that was kind of our synopsis of that. I think our next meeting is 3 October. Oh, the security festival, thank you to my teammate over there. We looked at that as well. To the upgrades to that for the security of the system that is also part of the Capital Project. So thank you for everybody who voted for yes for that. And I think 3 October is our next visitation committee meeting in the afternoon.
Thank you. Ms. McCleary for Capital Project?
We have our first scheduled meeting tomorrow at 5:00 p.m. here in this building.
Okay. And Ms. Simmons, I don't think that there's an OCSA.
There is, the next one is October 2nd. I think you'll be attending that in my seat. And then after that, the other one is in December, I believe.
Okay. Okay. And reports by board and city office.
Thank you very much. Let me start by saying congratulations to our new hires. Dylan, just let us know what we can do to help to support your initiatives. We hosted two members of the leadership team of New York State Education Department. We welcomed Lisa Alvarez from the Office of Bilingual Education and World Languages in addition to Chris Soriano, who's from the Office of Special Education on Monday. And in addition to, um, Chris Soriano, who's from the Office of Special Education on Monday. They met in this building with our, our entire, with our administrative team. We then did walkthroughs through, uh, classrooms at the high school and at North Maine. Um, they then had a, a unique opportunity to sit for an hour with just some of our teacher, uh, teaching staff, which, um, I think was really important to them, well, to the teachers and to the, the folks from the state, to really hear our teachers. The one thing that they stressed afterwards in our debrief, which was at the tail end of our, our time with them, was you have really good teachers. They must've said that three times to, to us. Um, we countered with, no, we have great teachers. And then we went on just to talk about the, the rest of the visit. So, uh, it was successful on, on all levels. And, uh, I'm excited for the next Board of Ed meeting to be on the road at Sapphire, one of our elementary schools. Um, I know Mrs. Terleki and her team feel the same, um, but we were excited to bring that back into, in the fold. So thank you very much.
Mr. Cahill?
Uh, so this is more of a public service announcement. So I just want to remind the community members that school tax collection is underway. And, uh, through the end of September, it's the interest-free period. When we hit October, there is, uh, you're still able to pay your taxes here at the education center, but there's a 2% interest penalty. Uh, so be cognizant of that. Uh, and then finally, uh, when we go into November, there's a few days, I think it's November 4th is the last day that you can actually pay your school taxes here. And there's a 3% penalty thereafter. You're still able to pay your taxes, but you have to go to the Orange County Department of Finance to do that. So, um, not exciting, but, uh, important. And with that, I hope everyone has a nice evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. BS?
Um, I want to congratulate Olivia Cooper and Dorian Thomas, uh, for the, for the semifinalist in a 2025, uh, National Merit Scholarship. These are the two, um, young minds amongst the 16,000 who are applying. So good luck to them. Uh, on the board agenda, that was the resignation of one of the technology team member, Nicholas De La Rusa. Um, he's been with us for four years. Um, he has grown tremendously, um, and he's going to work for another state agency, but we're excited. And, uh, thank you Nick for all your help and support to us. Good night.
Thank you. Dr. Hassler?
I, I agree. I'd like to echo that. Good, good luck to them as they continue on the process. That's what's exciting about that announcement. Um, condolences once again to the Carthers family and also, uh, just some thoughts and prayers are being sent out to the Meniscus community for the challenges that they're facing these days. So please know that, um, Monroe Berry is definitely thinking about them. Um, congratulations to, I'm probably stealing it under, I'm sorry.
I already told you that I was going to say that.
Okay, all right, then you can have it. You can have it. Uh, no, no, no.
I do not like sitting on.
It's a, it's an HR item, so I will, I will, I will pass it on to you.
Say it and then I'll say it more eloquently.
Nope.
Challenge is laid down.
High school open house is being rescheduled for October 10th.
This evening, thank you. This evening, the board, um, approved an appointment for our new athletic director, Brian Wilson. He is in the audience this evening. Uh, Brian, if you, Brian.
Welcome. And, um, it, I can say firsthand, it is a challenging job, but it is one of the most rewarding that you will ever find. So, um, thank you. We're very excited to work, um, with you. And, uh, please let us know if there's any way we can support you. Uh, I also want to mention that I had the opportunity to attend the PBIS kickoff event at Pine Tree Elementary School. Rarely do you get an opportunity where an entire student body comes together in one place and every single student in that building, um, with every staff member and the administration, the high school drum line. It was just a beautiful day out and it was, it was an incredible way to start off the year. Um, a positive event and it just, um, put me in a good mood for a good week and a half. About a week. But, uh, excellent event, so thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Nevek?
Um, keep it very quick. Thank you to all, um, the presenters tonight. It was a great presentation. I always learn a lot, um, and congrats to all the new appointees. Everyone have a good evening.
Thank you. Ms. Donahue?
Yeah, uh, congratulations to all the new employee, appointees. Um, I had the pleasure of attending the open house at Smith Clover for the first graders and at Central Valley for the second and third graders. Um, unfortunately, I got there too late for the middle school. They had already gone off to their classes, so I apologize for that. Um, I wish everybody a great semester and great school year. Have a nice evening.
Thank you. Ms. Simmons?
Uh, I just want to recognize all of the faculty and staff, um, who were very helpful during this week's lockouts due to bears and other things. Um, I know that can be a scary situation for our young people in navigating it the way that you all did. I think it was the least disruptive to them. So appreciate all of the folks who lent a hand in that. Um, congratulations to all of the new, um, appointees, um, expressing my condolences as well. Um, and thank you all. Uh, you are doing an amazing job, Dylan, and I wanted to express that to you as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Ms. McLeary?
Um, thank you to Dr. Hassler and Mrs. Rickley for the, uh, presentation this evening. Um, I want to welcome our new athletic director and I want to applaud the, um, student body for the great kickoff for the Back to Friday Night Lights football game. I think I heard things went very, very well. I was in attendance. It seemed like it was amazing. Everybody was participating. It was great to see so many community members. So I hope that that school spirit keeps up. Um, for all of those who are asking questions about food and concessions, we will be discussing that tomorrow at our Capital Project meeting. So should you like to attend and get firsthand information, feel free. If not, I will add it into my report. Thank you, have a good night.
Mr. Reynolds?
Again, welcome to all of our new teammates, uh, especially Mr. Brian Wilson as an O'Neill grad. A lot of great things today from other school board members on the O'Neill team, parents and students, both in that district. So we look forward to you having, uh, the reins over here in Monroe Woodbury. Um, uh, one thing I will mention too about presentations, um, if we could just be careful on acronyms, right? As, as an Army guy, I get acronyms, but however, when we're reading some of that, especially the parents who are not in the education field, it can be confusing. And then when they pull it up and look at it and then it becomes just whitewashed very quickly. So, you know, spell things out or at least the key at the end would be, I think, helpful for everybody. Don't worry, my superintendent tells me that every day, I think. Um, so, uh, and then final thing is, I know we've updated the reading program and all that. So if we could get some updates on that of how that's going, I think that's important for everybody to hear, not just the board. And the same with, uh, block scheduling. I know the elementary schools, I think all of them have gone to block scheduling, which I, I heard at, at the, the meeting that it was the first time that we've done that in a very long time. So I'm sure there's a lot of different things going on with that to make sure that, uh, our staff and faculty have what they need to accomplish whatever their, their goal is on all that. And of course, our students are adapting well to all of that. So I just highlight those few things and have a great night.
Mrs. Robinson?
Um, just congratulations to all the new appointees. Um, thank you for the presentation tonight, Eric. I know you kept it short and sweet. I like that. And, uh, have a good night.
Dr. Koifman?
I wanted to thank the presenters. Information was very useful. Congratulations to the, uh, appointees and condolences to the Meniscus community, of course. And, uh, everybody have a great evening.
Ms. Escobar, if you'd like to say something?
Um, it was a wonderful presentation today, so thank you so much. And, um, I'd like to extend a welcome to the new athletic director. Um, athletics are such an amazing thing in our community and I'm excited to be, uh, potentially working with you in the future. So, uh, thank you to the rest of you and have a great evening.
Thank you. Dr. Norman?
Good evening. I want to begin by sending my sincere condolences to the Meniscus, uh, community. Our thoughts and prayers are with you. I want to welcome Brian and our new appointees over the past month. Welcome. So we're in the midst of our third full week of school and I've dedicated hours of each week visiting buildings, connecting with administrators, teachers, staffs and students. And I intend to keep that up, uh, over the next several months. I had the distinct pleasure of meeting with some of our high school students who were part of the morning show. Dylan?
Yep.
Uh, we had a great time getting to know each other and I look forward to recording a series of video segments showcasing our students. On Thursday, October 10th, we will be holding a meet, the superintendent event at the high school at 5:00 PM. We invite all members of the school community to stop by. We will be offering various opportunities for these types of informal meeting greets throughout the school year. Look forward to meeting the community. Uh, today I concluded a two-day tri-state consortium training. Looking forward to debriefing with the cabinet and others on that. I've attended several open houses and enjoyed seeing our parents and guardians, connecting with the members of their school community. Thank you. I echo our congratulations to Olivia Cooper and Dorian Tamaris for the National Merit Scholar, Ultimate Finalist. Congrats. I'd like to send a special shout out to Joe Tripoto and members of our safety and security team. Last week was appreciation week and many of them were featured on district website and social media. So thank you. Thank you to all. On Wednesday, October 16th, Ms. Colleen Buck and Ms. Patricia Mahon will be recognized at the Mid Hudson School Study Council Awards for Excellence. Please check your email for registration information. Congratulations to these well-deserving honorees. I think the deadline to register was, uh, yesterday, but we're trying to extend that. I have so enjoyed watching our student athletes compete. I've attended the girls swimming diving meet, the modified football game versus Kingston, yesterday's boys soccer match and two varsity football Friday Night Lights events. This past Friday, football players invited teachers who had impacted their lives as their special guests. It was truly touching to see firsthand these connections between educator and student. I look forward to attending future events in the weeks ahead as we recognize our senior athletes. And just a final reminder, the district will go gold on Friday, September 27th to help build awareness for patriotic cancer. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Siriella?
Thank you. Um, I want to thank the administration team and all the staff for the chaos that was during that lockout period. Um, there was a lot of activity going on and a lot to coordinate. And we really appreciate the level of effort and work that goes into that. I also want to throw a little gauntlet down for Dr. Norman. I don't know if you've, uh, ever heard the superintendent in Cornwall and their snow closing messages and how creative they are. And since we have someone who can help record those, I think it would be great to give them a run for their money in the bad weather, closing delays area. So just throwing that down, you don't have to accept the challenge. I'm just laying it out there. Um, and I do want to thank the, uh, team for the great presentation and wish everyone a great evening.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll start with, uh, thank you to Mrs. Rickley for always looking for opportunities for our students to help them succeed in, in different, you know, ways. Presentation was very well detailed and on point, so thank you for that. And I, I echo what everybody said about last week's situations. There was so much going on and every single one of our, you know, crusader family did what they do best. They just pulled together and, um, you know, looked out for our student safety and made sure everybody was taken care of. So thank you, um, everybody. My condolences to Meniscus as well. I, I wanted to ask somebody to please speak about the CISM and tell the community how we're supporting the community.
Sure. So, um, Orange Osterbosse has a program called Critical Incident Stress Management, CISM. Um, and basically anytime there is, uh, some sort of incident that happens within a community that, um, would warrant support from outside school districts of lending a hand. Um, you know, they, they, they put out an all call and, and school districts do what they can to respond. Monroe Woodbury over the years has benefited in, in difficult times from having members of the CISM team come to our school district. And we work very hard to reciprocate. So, um, you know, similar to the situation that's happening right now in Meniscus, we have members of the Monroe Berry team who went out there to be able to support that district community. Um, and, and, and hopefully get them through to the best of our ability of very, very difficult times. So, um, you know, shout out certainly to our, our related service providers who, who take part in that. There's a training that goes along with it through Orange Osterbosse for them to be able to intervene. And so, um, you know, it, it's, it's a real great, it's, to me, it's, it's sort of the true definition of community, not just district community, but us as a county and how everybody looks out for one another. And, um, you know, we're, that, that's one resource that we're very fortunate to participate in.
Thank you, Dr. Hassler. And a, and a welcome to our new athletic director, Mr. Wilson and any other new staff. You're joining a great, uh, great school district. And Mr. Escobar, thank you for your, your update. You're completely committed to the role and it's evident. And, uh, we're looking forward to what you're going to share with us this year. And that's it. Have a great night and we're going to adjourn into a working session. Yes, is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.